Good evening. The hour having arrived and the call being present, I declare this meeting of the Norwood Board of Selection of January 15, 2019 officially in session. We will begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Norwood Community Media. We do have one appointment tonight, and that's seven o'clock, so that's right now, with Segal Reese, our health director here in Norwood. Segal, please come on up here, and we're delighted that you're able to join us tonight, and would like you to take some time, as much time as you want, to fill us in on what's going on with the Board of Health and the Health Department. And the floor is yours.
Sure, sure. Thank you for having me. I'd be remiss to say I get to come up here and report all the great things that we're doing at the Health Department, but I really want to acknowledge the staff down there that do a lot of this work that I'm going to be talking about here. So we have a great staff, and we're very fortunate, so I want to thank them for their hard work. So with the end of 2018, we're working on gathering a lot of our measures, our data. We did about 295 food inspections. That includes routine and complaint inspections. In addition, we conducted 68 housing and nuisance complaints. While that number's a lot lower, they usually take a lot more time and effort on those inspections, so they're pretty time-consuming. And then we'll be calculating our reportable diseases throughout the year, and we do submit that in the annual report, but we work on that data as we finish out 2018. One thing I would like to look at looking forward is a better way to gather that data and the measures year-to-year. There's a lot of things we do that we're unable to capture comparing, for example, on the inspections, what type of violations we're seeing every year, and to compare trends to see what type of violations we might be seeing in restaurants year-to-year, and how can we can address those things. We do a lot of education with the restaurants, so it'd be good information to know what we see every year. So that's something I want to look forward to doing. The department also works with the building manager and also with the fire department to arrange CPR AED training for the staff. We have several AEDs in the building and a lot in other public buildings, so while it's great to have them, it's also really important to have people trained on how to use them. So we'll be doing those trainings coming up soon for employees. It's definitely, we're well into flu season now, so I wanted to sort of talk about the numbers in the report. I did include a chart which graphs the state influenza-like illnesses, which they collect. And this year unfortunately is trending like last year, which as everybody remembers is a pretty severe year. It's still early into the, when we start to see the peak, so hopefully those numbers will not climb as much as they did last year. But we are definitely seeing a lot of influenza-like illness activity, which means a lot of flu. Specifically for Norwood data, we get the numbers for actually laboratory-confirmed patients that have actually gone to the doctor, gotten the test, and the laboratory confirms that they have influenza, and then we get that through an online reporting system called the Maven System. So they start, they started to come in in early December actually, but now the numbers are definitely picking up, but we still only have 25, which ironically is exactly what we had last year. So it mirrors the state data actually, that they're seeing similar amount of numbers, and so are we in Norwood. But I always use that chart that I include in the report because I think it's more reflective of what's going on in the area. Obviously, flu crosses town borders, so we want to know sort of what's going on in the area and across the state. Two really important programs I wanted to talk about that are doing a lot of activities. So we have the Impact Norwood, which is our Substance Use Prevention Coalition. It's been very active. We're working actually on applying for the third year of the grant, if you remember. It's a 10-year grant. Years one through five, you do have to reapply, but it's non-competitive. And then you have to reapply for the competitive portion of the grant in year six, and then again you have six through 10 to submit applications that are not competitive. So it's a non-competitive grant, but they do require a budget and a action plan, which is pretty extensive, so we've got to think about what we're doing in September 2020, which is pretty outrageous. But Aubrey, the program director, and I are working on that. But as part of the coalition, we have two community surveys out there that we'd like people to participate in. They're both available right on the front page of the coalition's website, and that's impactnorwood.org. It's a community survey and then a parent survey. And our requirement of this grant is to gather community data because they want to make sure that the programs we implement are strategic for Norwood and specific for Norwood. We use the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we were able to contribute a large portion of the funding for that in the schools. That was done in the fall. We should have data on that in the spring. So with the youth data on youth use rates, and then with the community data, we really hope to put together some programs that are tailored for the community. In addition to data gathering, we have a speaker series going on now. We have the second speaker coming, Patricia Coffey from Kids Healthy Minds Initiative, and she'll be presenting this Thursday, the 17th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Coakley. I think there's a typo in the report. It says library. It's actually in the auditorium. So 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Coakley Auditorium. We will be providing a light dinner for people that come, as well as childcare. So we really want to encourage parents in the community to come and attend that.
So that's this Thursday, January 17, from 6:30 to 8:30, the Coakley Middle School Auditorium. The speaker's name is Patricia Coffey from Kids Healthy Minds Initiative.
Yes. The purpose of her talk is to increase community awareness about youth mental health, to have parents recognize early warning signs of pediatric mental health, and to decrease stigma around mental health and its treatments. We always say you have to decrease the stigma if we want people to seek treatment. Lastly, another program that we're doing through Impact Norwood and was actually done regionally through a regional grant that we participate in around youth alcohol use, and it's the Photo Voice Project. Photo Voice in general is a project used to focus community around a public health or social justice issue, and very simply, the youth, everybody has cameras on their phones now, were asked to take pictures of alcohol in their environment. Where do they see it? How are they exposed to it? Things like advertisements. We have one picture of someone that opens up their produce fridge, and it's filled with beer. So just, you know, to show through youth eyes their exposure to alcohol. And then also, you couple that with some quotes, and one of the really, one of the really powerful quotes was that a youth actually said, "I think people that work in liquor stores should be, should be well-trained." And that's something that we also have been doing, and we did with your board, the education and the tips training that we've been offering. So it sort of mirrors what we're already doing, which is rewarding to see that even youth recognize that need. So we will be, we're going to get the pictures posted up and sort of create a display that we hope to travel through the public buildings and that the community can see. So that will be coming very soon. Then the last thing I want to talk about, again, another great program that sort of grew out of Impact Norwood and some other coalitions through the CCIT, which is the Community Crisis Intervention Team, which is headed up by actually Pam Schubert at the Housing Authority and the Police Department. And it is community stakeholders that get together and discuss certain cases in town and how we can prevent them from getting worse, whether it be the housing situation or somebody that we know in the community that is in a mental health crisis, and how we can work together with the mental health providers in the community to diffuse situations. So through that and through many of the stakeholders that are also at Impact Norwood, we came up with the Minds Matter Coalition. This is actually a partnership with Walpole, with the Health Departments of both towns heading it up. And with that coalition, we applied for a grant, and we got some funding for the Interface Mental Health Referral Helpline. And the numbers are on the report, but it is a helpline available Monday through Friday, nine to five. I will go over the numbers so everybody has it, but it's 888-244-6843. Information is on our website too, if people didn't get that number. But the point of this is that even when people want to get outpatient mental health treatment, it's very difficult to navigate through the health insurance system, to find somebody that has availability and location and specialty. So they have an extensive database, and they are able to make those matches for you much quicker and easier. In addition to, I should say, the grant was from a CHINA, which is actually funded from determination of needs. When the hospital does a renovation or adds beds or anything like that, they go through a state process where they give money into a fund that is channeled through these community health network alliances, the CHinas, and then those are given out for public health prevention grants like this one throughout the community. We've had several of them in the past. But so we were able to get not only DON money through the CHinas, but then Norwood Hospital also contributed to this program directly to supplement that funds. So we had the program for two years through the grant. I see this as sort of a pilot program, see if it works in the community, if people take advantage of it. Many of our surrounding communities have it also.
How will you measure success in a program like that?
Yes, I'm big on data measures. They have, they have quite a few measures that they take, not only the number of callers, but where they call from, what illnesses they're requesting help for, whether they make an actual make-a-match, that they find them a provider, how they heard about the program, I don't know if I said that. There's a whole lot of data sets. In the first two months, we did get, so we had to report to our grant providers, the grant funders, at the end of the year. So we had only signed on November 1st, so November, December, two months worth of data. We already had 11 callers, and it spanned the lifespan, which I was excited to see because in a lot of communities, it's obviously the schools that are the biggest user, and you see a lot of kids using the program. But in our coalition, there's a strong urge to have not only the youth, but also seniors. We're seeing a lot of mental health concerns. So what I liked is that in just the 11 calls that we've had so far, there was a span across the lifespan, both kids and seniors.
Mr. Bishop, please.
I think it's important too, we mentioned that any interaction with that hotline is strictly confidential.
Of course. Definitely trained mental health providers on the other lines answering the phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Segal.
Can you, real quickly, just to follow, because I'll forget the question, but when you talk about mental health issues among seniors, tell us a little bit what the profile is or what type of maladies we see.
You see a lot of depression, anxiety. Those are really the big hitters across any age, but depression definitely as seniors grow older, it's very common. And a lot of stigma, where I think a parent can call for their child with a lot less stigma. I think for a senior, either their caretaker or themselves to call is sometimes a lot more difficult. So we've been working with the senior center. There's a lot of people that need it and are looking for it. There's a lot of people that need it but don't want to call it, don't want to admit that they need it. So stigma reduction is huge to increase access to mental health care, to any healthcare. So along with promoting the interface hotline, we couple that with informations. We've created a poster that talks about, and I hope I remember the statistic correctly off the top of my head, but I believe it's one in five adults will have, oh yes, you have it right there. Thank you.
Right, 1 in 5, 19.6% of Americans ages 18 and older will experience a mental health problem this year.
So the idea behind that is to show that it's very common, and that to have it is okay, and that you can get treatment. I think there's another statement at the end that most people get treatment and make a full recovery. So I rambled on a lot about a lot of our programs. Again, I'm very proud of the work we do and the staff that helps me do it and that we are a great team down there.
No question you do great work, Segal Reese. The department is really, is really strong. We're proud of it in this town. Do you have any questions, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Reese, we really appreciate all that your department does. Thank you. A few questions, please. Do you still have the blood pressure clinic in South Norwood?
Yes, of course.
So could you be kind enough to tell everybody about that, when it's open and so forth?
I believe it is, is it the second Friday? Got to help me on that. We have a schedule of blood pressure clinics. We have about one a week throughout the community at the different senior housing. We have one in South Norwood, and we have one in Town Hall. So pretty much every week you can get your blood pressure at one of those locations. They've been a great longstanding program. Karen has been our public health artist, has been doing those.
And the Italian club in South Norwood lets the town of Norwood use their hall for the clinic. That's been going on for more than, what, 25 years? And Kathy Ronco used to be there, and Stacy Lane. Now Karen is there, which is wonderful. And that clinic provides a way for local people to have a service that they need. And when it was every week in the past, when it was every week in South Norwood, it provided a place for old people, lonely old people, to go and to have their blood pressure checked. And your nurses saved a person's life. Did you know that? There was a person who didn't show up, and they didn't know why, so they went to his house, and he was on the floor with, he had run out of medication or something. They got the fire department to shovel off the stairs, and they saved his life. It was, it's really a pretty wonderful way to reach out to the community. That's an excellent service that you provide. Thank you. The next question that I have is about, have you had any reports about the smell from the asphalt plant?
I actually brought, thought that question might come up. We had three or four complaints in September, and that was, yes, three complaints in September, but we actually have had nothing since then. We did reinvigorate our sort of protocol with them, where we made it much more extensive, the reports that they would have to give us based on when we called in and called in a complaint, verified the complaint with them, and the response we wanted from them needed to be a little more vigorous. They did comply with that, and they have been complying, but we haven't had any complaints since September.
I'm glad that they are complying with your information requests. That's very important, and I'm glad that you have them on the run. That's, that's a good thing. In regard to your want about the data and sorting out the data in regard to violations and stuff like that, Mr. Relic has that new program, you know? Do you think that there's a way, he's a genius, that he could help you out and figure out a way that it could be put in?
Actually, we did a demo with the Digital Health Department, which Tyler Muniz had purchased a few years ago, and it is specific for environmental health inspections. So, you know, we're waiting to see the cost on that, obviously, but I think that would be a great way to get a lot more data sets and indicators to see how effective our work is or is or is not.
That's something that's timely now with this whole initiation of the system and stuff. So that's, this is a good time to get into that. Then my last question is about, you mentioned about emergency medical treatment in public buildings. How would it be the staff, if an emergency occurred, the staff would know who handled it in their building? Is that, is that how the procedure goes?
The way we see it, the more trained, the better. Anybody can administer an AED. It actually walks you through the process pretty easily, so even without training, we would encourage people to go grab that AED if they think it needs to be used. The key, I think, there is when do you use it? So having that basic training and then the confidence behind you when you're going to use it also with that training. So I think we want to train as many people as possible. You don't want to wait for someone to come. Unfortunately, it hasn't happened in a while, but if there is an injury in Town Hall, they'll call the public health nurse. When, you know, the first response should be to call 911. And then if the nurse is available and can come up, of course, they are much more trained than any layperson, but the first call should be 911, and then administer help as you can.
But the other buildings, like the schools, how about the schools, or how about, how about the civic?
Yes.
What happens there?
They all have AEDs. I'm not, I'm less familiar with the school procedures, but I'm sure they get their CPR and AED training, and they have nurses in the building too. And the civic is included with us, the civic, and we've opened it up to the library too.
Oh, that's good too. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Segal, while we're on the topic of the defibrillators, we have them in the building, and it may not come under your domain, but do we have a battery protocol? Do we check those to make sure they're fully charged at all times?
Yeah, for several years, we did administer the program and check the batteries and make sure the batteries and the pads weren't expired. What we've done now, when we expanded the program, actually Kathy and the, Kathy took it over, and we now have a contract to make sure that those get checked routinely.
Very good, thank you. And lastly, I was in Manhattan a few months ago, and I noticed that several restaurants have, not all the restaurants, they have a placard, maybe eight and a half by 11 on the front windows, with a letter, and the letter A very prominently displayed tells the consumer that you have an excellent sanitation record. Is that something we're thinking about down the road, or do you see a value in it?
There's plus and minuses, like in any program really. I think it's great for public awareness about inspections. You notice that you only saw As, so if you get a lower...
I did notice that.
If you get a lower grade, you're actually not required to post it in most programs. And really, it's a snapshot of that instant when the inspector was there. So I guess these are the negatives of it. So, you know, you could get an A based on a certain amount of measures. It doesn't mean everything's perfect. It's a calculation of measures that gets you a certain amount of points, which like a grade in school gets you, you know, 90 and above is an A, or whatever valuation you come up with. So it's a snapshot in time like any inspection. I hesitate with the program because I don't think it accurately depicts what's going on, and a lot of times it creates a pressure for the inspector, creates additional pressure for the inspector to get the grade for the restaurant because where it is so publicized. What I like to do is educate people on food safety and talk about what we do out in the inspections, and encourage people to call complaints if they see things. You know, Angelo or Angelo de Lugar, food inspectors, has been on.
Does a great job.
And really works with the establishments, so it creates a little more, it makes his job more difficult in the field, to be honest, when the restaurants are looking for a specific parade.
He does more, I think, than just work with them. He actually helps them to fix the problem, whatever the problem may be. And I just want to also say, as I conclude here, that that letter A question was my question, not anybody else's question, if you know what I mean.
No, we've had the discussions, well, yeah.
I know it's been brought up, but it was my personal question.
The board and I have had those discussions, and I think it's something we need to look at. We're actually going through a process now called the FDA Retail Standards Program. And the FDA has instituted a voluntary program, but their idea is that not only in Massachusetts, where we have our little communities that all regulate a little differently, but across the country, everybody might enforce the FDA code a little differently. So what they want to do is create a standard, so it's enforced more evenly across the country. It's a volunteer program where we get grant money to contribute and head towards that standard. We just completed the Foodborne Illness Investigation Standard, and so now our procedures meet the national standard for foodborne illness investigation. I think as we move towards those, that it might be a step that we evaluate part of the data that I'm looking for to evaluate, because we have no real evaluation. We know how many inspections we do, and we see that number go up and down, how many complaints we get, but we're not really seeing what are the results of those inspections? Are we seeing less handwashing violations because we're doing an education program on handwashing? I should say, with the idea of, our idea here in Norwood is that we work with the establishments, and we do two, twice a year, we hold educational seminars, and we encourage the food handlers to come in and go to a two-hour workshop that Angelo teaches, just about basic food So as we work towards the standards, I think evaluating our public communication with the grading system being one of those tools, but there's some other tools that you can use to, to increase the public awareness about food inspections and people's safety levels in restaurants.
Thank you for that answer, and thank you for all the work you and your staff does. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Segal. We were talking about ticks, so if you would.
Sure, yes, of course. We tend to talk about ticks in the, when the spring starts here, and we get the warm weather, definitely during the peak in the summer months when we see a lot of tick activity. But we always say, you know, it's always tick season now. When the temperatures rise above 40, they start to get active again. They kind of go dormant when it can get to a frost or deep snow. But the minute the temperatures go up, and like we'll have warm days this week, we were just talking about, the ticks will start to get active again. So all those tick precautions that we really, we tend to put out more in the summer, really need to be followed all year round, unfortunately. It's just so prevalent in this area with not only Lyme disease, but we're seeing anaplasmosis, tuberculosis, a lot of co-infections with multiple bacteria from ticks. And we're seeing new viruses that we hadn't seen this far north before. Not only, I mean, with ticks, but also with mosquitoes, we're seeing new viruses and infections from different types of mosquitoes that have sort of risen up north with increasing temperatures.
Yes. So if a person on a warmer winter day brushes against a bush, if there's ticks there, there could be a problem.
Yeah, good point. I should mention what you should, precautions you should take. Wearing long sleeves, which is a little easier when it's cooler out. Doing tick checks every night if you've been in a wooded area. Wearing bug spray with the knit to protect you. A lot of it is in low-lying brush, or like you said, if you rub up against brush, like hiking through the woods or something like that, you want to definitely do a tick check that night and check your children.
I remember a lady in Needham, in fact, she was a CPA, who got Lyme disease and had long-term effects from it, as it happened unfortunately. But she told me that a particular clump of bushes in Needham had caused like close to 50 cases of Lyme disease, a clump of bushes that they finally determined, and they took care of that. But a very serious thing, you know, I had one of my, I had one of my boys that, in doing his work in someone's backyard, got bit by a tick, you know, in a backyard, you know, not out in the deep woods or something like that. And people in Norwood have told me in their backyards, particularly, I guess, over by 95, where there's a lot of deer, they're kind of prevalent over there. But thank you so much, Segal, and thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Anything else? Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for all the information. Couple items. Six months, nine months ago, we agreed to be part of a national lawsuit, basically, on opioid issues that originally came as a recommendation from your department. Have we heard anything? I know, I expect it's going to be years before we hear anything from it, but the attorneys themselves, are they in contact with you, the police chief? I assume they want some basic data from the town, right?
They reached out last week, I heard from them. They have a preliminary filing ready to go. We sent it off to MHTL to review, but they're just now getting around to file and be sort of a bulk lawsuit, if you will. So we agree, we assume at some point they're going to want data from us, but all we've heard is just last week they're ready to file.
Okay, thank you. And CV licenses. I wonder if the two departments can work closer together. We've recently had a couple of cases where restaurants have opened up without coming for their CV license, and I believe they've been to your department, been inspected, and gotten the approvals they need from your department, yet they haven't even filed to come up here. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can work with the two departments so that we have a checklist of some types, so we know that anytime you're checking a new establishment, that we are aware of it, so that we can make sure whether they get their CV license or not? I mean, a lot of establishments that you check don't need a CV license. They're not going to be having seating on premises or so forth, but also when you're in there checking, it probably becomes pretty obvious whether they're, they are going to be that type of establishment or not. If we can just get some kind of word on that, some kind of communication, maybe you and Christina could work on something.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, and I know about those two instances. We, that's a standard question we ask them when they come in, so we have a plan review process that every food establishment goes, and one of the basic questions on that is, do you have seating? And if you do, you need to go upstairs and get a CV license. Sometimes the seating goes in later. Sometimes they tell us they don't have seating, so we say, then you're fine. It is a conditional, we have a letter, we issue them after we review that packet, and it's a standard condition in that letter, if you have seating, you need to get a CV. So I always find if they claim that they didn't know, that's sort of a false claim. They've been verbally told when they come in, it's on the paperwork, and then it's on the letter of conditional approval they get. But things definitely, I know the two instances, they fell through the cracks, and I think we can definitely work on better communication. And to Mrs. Donahue's point, that maybe technology can solve that. We have a process that certain, every department has to sort of check along the way of a new establishment coming in. I think that could definitely benefit. We also have the same thing with the building department. It might be something that we both regulate. Sometimes communications fall through, and, you know, the occupancy numbers are different from their seating to the seating that we have. So things like that definitely happen, and I think, I think there is an IT solution to that, but basic communication always works too, for sure.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Nothing else, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
Mrs. Reese, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Segal.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to new business now. Let's see. Car wash requests, number one. A, Norwood Parents Music Association, Norwood's instrumental students requesting a car wash for Saturday, June 8, from 9 to 3.
Motion to approve, sir.
Should I just read them all?
Sure.
Just read them all, right, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, so that was A. B, Norwood Parents Music Association, again, for Norwood's choral students, requesting the permission for Saturday, May 11th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Boy Scout Troop 49, St. Catherine of Siena, Saturday, June 1, from 9:00 to 3:00. Norwood High School Girls Basketball, Sunday, June 22nd, from 9:00 to 1:00. And Norwood High School Girls Volleyball, Saturday, August 24th, from 9:00 to 1:00. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve all of them, made in second, did anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number two, Cemetery Dean for Signature, the board.
Motion signed.
Second.
Motion made in second, did anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Item number three, Police Chief William G. Brooks submitting information regarding liquor compliance checks.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bishop?
I think on three separate dates, there was a total of fifty-one visitations, if you will. I'd like to, if the board is in agreement with me, to take it under advisement at this time.
Second.
Motion made to take it under advisement, made in second, did anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number four, Mark Good, Treasurer Collector, submitting notification from John Clark, President of the Mass Collectors and Treasurers Association, that he, Mark Good, has received a certification and is now a member of the, of the elite group of treasurers and collectors in the Commonwealth.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, motion?
Right.
Second. All right, we have a motion to send, made in second, did anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number five, Bill McCoy, Friends of the Council on Aging, submitting request to include a stuffer in the March electric bills, soliciting membership in the Friends of the Council on Aging.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made in second, did anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Number six, thank you. Number six, Patrick Duchesne, Assistant Planner, submitting Anne White Scoble's Letter of Resignation from the Community Preservation Committee.
We'll forward it to the town clerk. Notice, notice it wasn't, it was addressed to Mr. Greeley and the Housing Authority itself, and the planning department were CC'd, but the town courts wasn't, seemed to be notified on this, so I think we should forward it to them.
Okay, motion to forward to the, Ms. Scoble was the Housing Authority's representative, right, appointee? Okay, so it'll be up to them to find a replacement. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded?
Yes, but on the motion.
On the motion, Mr. Donahue.
Could we please amend that to add letter of thanks?
Absolutely.
And a letter of thanks?
Yes.
To, to Ms. Scoble. Okay, very good. Motion made and seconded, anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Item seven, Selectman William J. Plasko submitting Forbes Hill RFP update. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned we were working on the RFP, and that we hope to maybe be ready to go out on the streets even after this Thursday. Looks like we will need a little more time. We've got some recent quick comments that we want town council to look into, real estate experts in the office of town council, this is not a simple transaction, we want to make sure we do it right, so we're doing that. And I just wanted, one thing, we've been moving forward with this, I want to make sure the board knows that we're putting this out with kind of a weighted, we're looking for commercial first, and multifamily housing last, if you will, and several other possibilities of development in between. So want to make sure that that's in, that the board's in agreement with that, to move in that way, and also on a minimum price. At town meeting, minimum price was set at eleven million dollars. The board has its legal ability to do whatever it wants, as long as it's not less than eleven million dollars. The draft right now does have the price set at eleven million dollars as a minimum price, but I want to, again, before we possibly hit the street with it, make sure that the board, as a whole, does agree with that. We had an appraisal done. The appraisal showed it, with the consideration for the new zoning the town meeting passed, at a value of ten million, one hundred thousand. The town's current appraisal, through the assessors' records, have that site at ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, eight thousand dollars. We had, when we went to town meeting with eleven million dollars, we had taken the appraisal, added five percent for, that's about how much the increase happens every year, and that ten thousand six was a two thousand seventeen number.
Ten million six.
Ten million, excuse me. So that added another five hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred, ten dollars, brought it up to like eleven million, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So we took that number, and the fact that our appraisal was only ten-one, and kind of went in an even number in between, which was the eleven million. I personally was hoping to be able to recommend a higher number, but the economy's kind of taken a turn and so forth, and I hate to see us get out in the marketplace and maybe have reached a little too far, too ambitiously, and not, and turn off bidders. But again, looking for some input from the board, and how they feel on that, that issue.
All right, we'll tell you what then, we'll canvass the board. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know where it's jumping at the bit. I look at it this way, we've been talking this over, various of us with each other, and I think a reasonable compromise number, because before I give that number, I'd say, having been a purchaser of real estate numerous times myself, for my own dwelling, the price starts it off. Yeah, people can bid higher, they may or they may not, but the price is where you start at. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see us off of the property at twelve million, at least. That'd be the number that I'd want to see, and I understand the other information. I will add that when, when the mansion was occupied for commercial uses, that property was assessed valuation two or three years ago at twelve million dollars, at that time, with the mansion occupied. The mansion is not occupied now, so therefore, the assessment is less when the building is not being occupied. But my presumption is, one way or another, the mansion's going to be occupied, so I think the twelve million is the reasonable number to start at with the property, and hopefully, there'll be a bidding war, and we'll get even more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Howard, anybody else want to weigh in on this? Mr. Bishop, go ahead.
Personally, I don't have a problem with the higher step of twelve billion. This is just a number, and it can be negotiated up or down at any point in time, so I don't have a problem with.
Can't be negotiated down.
Can't be negotiated down. Just a minimum price.
If we, if we set it as a minimum bid, and there's no bidders because it's too high, we could go out to bid again, but we can't negotiate per se. Just to make that clear, we can't negotiate that.
All set?
I'm all set.
All right, we'll come back to the, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Plasko, I think eleven million would be the, would be the better number. Let me put it to you this way. I think it stands to reason, you will get more interest at eleven million than you will at twelve, okay? And I think what's more important than the amount of money we get back from this, is the quality of bids we get, quality of offers we get. It's not just how much they're going to pay for us, but what are they going to do with the property? I think you're more likely to get what you want up there, whether it's commercial or residential, but I think you're more likely to get the commercial proposals that you want at the lower price, at eleven million. So I mean, that's why I, but in town meeting set eleven, we have appraisals that say really below eleven, and we're assuming a five percent increase in the value of that property, and we're sort of hitting a real estate market that might have plateaued already. So I think, I think raising the minimum, minimum price might, might exclude a borrow, a proposal that you really like, as opposed to encouraging further.
Yeah, I think, I think I hear what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, and agree with it, particularly with the current economic climate and class for construction at this point, going up with new tariffs and everything on building materials. As a, in trying to attract a commercial type of operation up there, which I just mentioned, we're putting it's the highest scoring for bidders, that was only valued at eight-five, eight million, five hundred thousand. The ten-one was after the zoning, which allowed housing, and housing clearly is what brings the higher number. The people that we bought the property from had a, an offer for thirteen million, nine hundred thousand, but that was for being able to build three hundred units, and that never developed, and that didn't happen. So I think your comments are well taken, and at this time, like I said earlier, personally, I was going to hope to recommend going up in the price, but things have changed enough just in the last few months that I don't want to outsmart ourselves, and I think the comments you made about the bidding climate and the results of what we're going to get, and the taxes we're going to get from the development after it's purchased and occupied and developed, makes sense, so I'd be, I'd be willing to stay at the eleven.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the work that you've done, Mr. Plasko, on the project, and your committee's done a great job. However, I have to agree with Mr. Bishop and Mr. Howard, and the reason for that is because we have the ability to go back out to bid if no one submits a bid, and we could just go out and rebid the whole project. And as recently as five o'clock this afternoon, I was at my computer, working on a Gates, and one of the items on the computer had maybe fifty real estate appraisals in Norwood, and it was a house that was selling on a five thousand, two hundred square foot lot for six hundred, forty-four thousand dollars. And this is prime property, it's beautiful property, and it's not really taking a bad chance on getting the extra million dollars. If we have to go out to bid, we will go out to bid, and maybe the most that we would lose would be some time and operating expenses, which would be maybe a hundred thousand or so. So I'm willing to take the chance and go with the minimum bid of twelve million dollars.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, then. Let's suppose that you get, let's suppose that you get bids for residential units, okay? Any number of residential units, and let's say that the, and I'm, I'm making up a number here for the purpose of illustration, but it happens to be the number we paid for the property, which is fifty thousand dollars per unit. If you are willing to, if you insist upon a million dollars more for residential, you'll have to have, you almost certainly will have, have to allow, or have to admit to, more units than if you're willing to live with eleven million. Is that, is that fair to say?
Here's what I'm, that may be the case, but fifty thousand dollars per unit is an old figure. That figure's been around for at least ten years. What I'm interested in is entities like Polaroid, entities like Factory Mutual, entities like Moderna, we've just got wonderful, wonderful Moderna there, and, and one of the most outstanding new industries in the Commonwealth. When one, you know, they're going to be a draw, they're going to tell other big, big time industry that, that Norwood's a great place to do business, because we have our own electric company, because we have good quality water. One of our own selectmen went to another town and had to install sixteen thousand dollars in equipment to get good water for his business, not Norwood, we have the best, L W U R A, and we have the electricity, we have a good tax rate for businesses, and, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to attract some additional industry.
All right, well, let me ask you this, then. Do you think that if, if the interest in the property on either residential or commercial side is sufficient, I mean, I'm not sufficient, but if it is, if it is really strong, somebody, they're in a bidding process, aren't they going to, aren't they going to bid more than eleven million? I mean, I'd like to get twenty million for the property if somebody will pay us, no?
I'd rather start at twelve than eleven.
We're not sitting at cap on how much they can bid, just a minute.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, I'm thinking, we're, are we, we're likely to get more bids at eleven than we would at twelve. Is that, is that irregular?
Well, you don't know.
Well, what do you, what does the arithmetic tell you?
The only thing I would caution on the discussion of, well, if we're wrong, we can go to bid. When you go to bid a second time, you lose bidders. They, they don't come back, they don't, they don't bid again necessarily. They don't want to go through the process, they don't think the town's serious, whatever. They've put money into it, and they're not going to do that again. So, and the site isn't, you know, we say it's beautiful, but it's actually a very complicated site to build on. There's quite a bit of expense that has to go into it, there's no roadway that has to be built in and so forth. So it's, it may look to you on the surface that it's pretty, but from a developer's point of view, it's a very complicated and costly site.
So we have the Mass Municipal Convention coming up this weekend, and this will be a good chance to get together with people from across the Commonwealth, and I had hoped to be there for the opening session, when the governor is there. There was a wonderful friend that I had from, who used to be in the candy business, and his name was Joe Schneider. His lifelong dream was to have a governor's mansion, and I can see that, that house as a governor's mansion, and it's, it's just another idea, it's a wonderful idea. And we're one of, I think we're one of two, two states in the whole United States that doesn't have a governor's mansion. And, and we, there are lots of ideas out there. There was a group from Norwood that felt preserving some of the land would be a good thing. I think we have our options open.
Well, nevertheless, we do have to move forward with the RFP process as directed by town meeting, and, and we do want to get, I think, anyway, we want to get to the market pretty soon. We have had some interest from various developers, we have financial pressures on us to dispose of this property in some way. I think if we get out into the street, out onto the market soon, with a lower minimum price of eleven rather than twelve, we will generate more interest than if we go later, or even at the same time at the higher price. However, if the board, if the majority of the board wants to go to twelve, we can do that. Yes, Mr. Donahue?
Move that we submit into twelve.
Second.
We have a motion to, in the RFP, include a minimum price of twelve million dollars, made and seconded. Anything further on the motion? Mr. Bishop?
I don't want to go sideways here, but after listening to the discussion, and the fact that you yourself are in the finance business, and Mr. Plasko's been on this issue from day one, I'm going to go back to the eleven million.
Okay. Anything further on the motion? Hearing none, no, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, I'm in favor.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Two to three, the motion fails. Now, we'll entertain a motion to, for a different number. Mr. Plasko?
Eleven million dollars is minimum price set by town meeting.
All right. Do we have a second?
What was the number?
Eleven million. Are you seconding?
I'll second it.
Very good. We have a motion for eleven million as a minimum price in the RFP, made and seconded. Anything further?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, on the motion, yes.
Just to say, that eleven million difference comes out of our pocket.
One million difference.
Excuse me, yes, one million difference, or in total, two million dollars, comes out of our pocket, then, just so you know.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Very good.
I think you also noticed that was a minimum bid.
Minimum bid, yeah. Yep, Mr. Donahue?
So, I really wanted it at twelve million, but do I have to vote for it at eleven million? Because we want to, you know, we want to sell it, you know? So I'm in an awful spot now.
We can vote against it.
Just vote against it?
If you'd like.
But I'm really for selling it.
Well, that's not going to stop us from selling it, it's just setting the price.
Right, but I know that, but, you know, in real life, it would be better if we had a better vote, if we're going to, you know? So I might have to vote for it, even though I wanted the twelve million.
All right. We getting unanimous vote here, do you think?
I think we might under protest.
Right.
Motion has been made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, Mr. Plasko, is all, all set, then?
I think that's it, thank you.
All right, we'll send it on your way.
Get it on the street as soon as possible.
All right, very good. Does it come back here first, by the way?
If you'd like it to. We were trying to get it on the street, but certainly, we can get copies to everybody.
I don't want to delay.
We could just email it to everybody.
Yeah, soon as it, soon as it's finally done, yeah.
Okay, okay.
At this point, it's really just legal language and procurement language that we're really settling on.
All right, okay. All right, very good. All right, that's, yes.
So, in real life, there are bidding wars that go on at sales now, which didn't happen a lot in the past.
That might redound to our benefit. All right, let's see. All right, item eight, and the last under new business, before we move on to Selectman's Addendum Manager's Update, is just information regarding the FY 2020 budget. Mr. Mazooka, I know we're a little early in the process here, but we just wanted to get a little bit of a preview, because the calendar's getting filled up, and, so if there's any early information you want to give us on the budget, we're here and we are at your service. service.
Sure, just to let you know, the board did receive a list of potential budget cuts from me. As you know, we will be facing a deficit as we move into the FY 20 budget. We're taking a little bit of a different approach internally. Department heads this year submitted all of their budgets, flat or with only contractual increases, or if there was sort of a commodity price increase that we knew had a match. So, it's not the normal budget year where it's sort of a, here's everything we request, and then we sort of whittle that down. So, we really started at a, a lower point than we normally would. We've come up with some cuts to perpetually, to be able to close the deficit for this year. Some of them are actual cuts, there's quite a few of them, and there are actual cuts of the budget, services that we won't have next year that we currently have this year. Some of them are just readjustments of numbers that come off as a cut but aren't really a cut to the, actual cut to the budget or the level of service to the public. So, we will have to make cuts next year. We are waiting on really two final numbers to get a complete number to the budget, to the board. Neither one will change dramatically unless health insurance goes crazy from the board, the overall budget pitcher. One of them is the state aid number, we have a projection built in there, we'll know that number at the end of this week or early next week. The governor traditionally at the MMA conference every year releases sort of what his state aid number is, sometimes usually the day of, or early next week we'll get the actual cherry sheet numbers. The other one is at some point in early February, we're waiting for a number from the GIC, which is our health insurance provider. That number, of course, is subject to change, but they sort of give us their first out the gate, here's what we think the health insurance rate increase would be.
May I ask you, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
The assumptions that we're making on state aid and GIC, can you, do you have any ahead?
Yeah, the state aid is, we, we project an average of the last five to 10 years as our state aid increase. It's not substantial, but we do want to see that go up and now. We just want to get the actual number, because some of those numbers are subject to fluctuation, school aid side especially, so we just want to make sure we get that number.
So, we're looking at $11 million something.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's not likely to go up or down a million dollars. Now, health insurance, every percentage point different, we've projected it at a 5% increase. That's about our historic average the last five to seven years. Last year, we had a very low increase, almost no increase in health insurance, so we're very concerned that this year is going to be higher than average. Every percentage point difference in the health insurance number is about $100,000. So, that five that we have programmed in, if it becomes three, that's great, there's $200,000 worth of flexibility. If it becomes seven, that's $200,000 of additional cuts between the town and the school department. So, we just, that's really the last number we wait for before we're more or less certain that we can have numbers to go to town meeting. The board has been presented with a list of cuts. I've gotten back from one or two, use sort of your priorities for what you would want to restore, if we do find some flexibility, or if there's some items in there that you find unpalatable. We will have departments come before the board. We are trying to wait to get a completed document to the board as well on what those, what the final budget will look like. And we'll be able to get an actual second pass document to the board, first or second pass document to the board in the next couple of days. That'll have the full detail, the numbers of the budget, but we're starting off with here's the projected deficit, here's what we're looking at to cut, because most of the other lines we've just left as they are, just funded contractual increases.
So, so we're, on top of state aid and the GIC assumptions, I'm sorry, what did you say, the GIC assumption, 5%?
5%.
Okay. On top of those, we are assuming zero contribution on the, zero revenue stream from, from free cash?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to explain why, we only have 1.6 million in free cash. We know we're going to have some capital requests that we'll need to fund out of free cash, and on top of that, we're not through the winter yet, so that's where we go to fund our snow and ice. And I think if everyone remembers the winter of 2015, we were really great up until this time of year, and then winter really hit.
January 26.
No. I'm hoping that doesn't happen this year. Every day I get up and I hope for no snow because it costs us a lot of money, which is funny, when I was a kid, I used to hope for snow days, and now I cry when we have snow days because they're, they cost us a fortune. But, it's too early to really even say, well, let's program a half a million or a million of free cash. We can end up finding we need to spend all of that. Early to mid-March, we might be able to see where we are and say, okay, here, after we take care of some capital expenses and some snow and ice, here's where we think we are. But it's just, with that number being so low, it's just too early in the year to really say we reasonably think we can use any of that money to offset the budget. We should use some of that for capital expenses. And we'll be getting capital outlay together around the beginning of February. They're going to be reviewing a, a new format for the capital budget that presents a lot more information than it has in the past, a more detailed lookout of the five-year period instead of just some numbers on the sort of two-page sheet that we do. They'll actually have explanations of those projects in the out years, so we can really start to see how our total capital expenditures go over the next five years, and really what our fiscal obligations are for the total investment in our infrastructure over the next five years.
And also, I know, because I know you're kind of overhauling the way we do it, Mrs. Donahue's on that committee as well, we're looking forward to it, to getting the first meeting scheduled. The, the, the school department, will they be sort of funneling their, their requests through you as well, so we sort of have one master document?
Yes, that's all there is, is to get capital outlay, the complete picture of everything that we're doing, so they have one whole complete picture, and they have all the information there, ready and go. We're waiting on, checking on a couple of numbers, we're waiting on the debt service analysis for projected borrowing for capital projects, and then a little bit of QAQC on the actual document. And the goal is to get that out to capital outlay, give them a week or two on their own to review it. Then we'll have a meeting, we'll sort of go through the format, we'll go through the document, go through the presentation, they'll go through their normal process.
Okay. Very good. Well, so you've got a first pass in front of you, I see Mr. Plasko down there flipping pages, I know he might have a question or two. Mr. Plasko, shall I turn it over to you now?
All right. Mrs. Donahue had a question, but I'm...
Go ahead, Mrs. Donahue, go first.
Aren't we late on the capital outlay thing?
A little late, yeah. We'll get to it early February. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. I don't see a total on the bottom of the page. You know what these add up to?
Oh, it's about 1.7 million.
1.7 million.
And that includes removing the roadwork we've been funding out of the general fund, because that's our projected deficit.
We have to cut 1.7 million from the original or base budget debts been submitted. So, you're looking for priorities, you're looking for input, you're telling us where you've started to look. If I was to have a hard problem with one of these and think it was too high a priority that we should be cutting it, it's only reasonable that I should be able to, or have to, say that there's something else in the budget that's not as high a priority. When am I going to see that? When am I going to see the full budget? How am I going to know what number to compare to this?
Well, we'll get the, you that sort of first pass document in the next couple of days, but again, we, we didn't just pick our cuts and add a whole bunch of other things to the budget. What's been added to the budget, with one or two exceptions, and we'll have it at the board, are just contractual increases. So, we, we can get a separate list that shows that. Anything we don't do on this list, if our revenue projections stay the same and our expense projections stay the same, you're right, we've got to cut something else. So, if there's a $40,000 item on there that we say, gee, we really don't want to cut this, we do have to go cut something else to the $240,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Plasko, thank you. Anybody else, questions?
No, sir, I get it.
So, if, if there's anything particular on that list you've given us that we want to have a conversation with you about, we can email you on it and...
Correct.
But, but we're at the early stages, there might be some changes anyway.
Correct.
Perhaps even some good news.
Always possible. I, I'm sometimes often a glass half-empty kind of guy, but you never know, health insurance could come in a little low, and, and maybe we don't need to cut that $40,000 item.
That's exactly where that cup is too, all right.
Well, you know, mine's a...
All right. Very good. We all set then? Mr. Mazuka, is there anything else from you, sir?
I do have one update. It relates to trash removal. Waste management is restructuring how they remove trash from the community. It's not impacting our rates or our schedule, but everyone is supposed to have their trash and recycling out by 7:00 a.m., and we really need everyone to have it out by 7:00 a.m. What they're going to be doing is they're going to need to send their, to try to make their own budget work. They're going to be sending out their trucks to do a full run of trash, deposit that, and then come back and do a full run of recycling. So, nobody's day is going to change, but the time in the day that your recycling trash gets picked up may end up changing.
Probably happen this week.
Yeah, we've, we've always told people you have to have them out there by 7:00 a.m., but if you know that your route, yeah, you got to get it out by 7:00 a.m., but they're usually not there till 11:00. We want to remind everyone to please get it out by 7:00 a.m. because those times will change, but your day is not changing.
Okay.
And your recycling week is not changing.
That's important, okay.
Please by 7:00 a.m. have it out there.
Can we put that on the website or something?
Oh, we've already been getting it, been getting it out there, but just by 7:00 a.m. have your trash out there.
Technology, okay, good. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, very good. Well, then we'll move on to selectmen's addenda, and let's see, we'll start with you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, sir, but I have nothing this evening.
All right. Mr. Howard?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of all of us, I'd like to extend sincere condolences to Mr. Plasko, who lost his only sister this week.
Thank you.
Joyce, in that Norwood High School, class of 62, so the, you know, her classmates and the friends and everybody, we extend our sincere condolences, dear friend.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Of course. Also, I'd like to extend sincere condolences to the family of Dolores Elias. Dolores Elias passed away Sunday. She was not, she just turned 90 in November. She started her own business in Norwood 67 years ago. She was one of the first women to have her own business in Norwood, and she was born and brought up in Norwood, Bolch School, graduated Norwood, Peabody High School, and she got hairdressing at Peabody School and went on to have her own business. She has two wonderful daughters, Sharon Westkuger and Diane Shelby, who both have wonderful families. But Dolores also helped us out here around town. She was always involved in the concert committee since the beginning. She was the chairwoman of Pops with my sister for 20 years, Norwood night, Pops on the Carmen. She was on the flower committee, she was on the decorations committee, she was on the South Norwood Committee, and she, she really was very active nationally in the Orthodox Church. She went with the Metropolitan, who's the equivalent of the Pope in the Orthodox Church, to the Middle East in 1991 on a peace mission.[1579.83]